Great, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 26th special meeting of the Gloucester City Council. This meeting is a one-item agenda. And in the interest of government transparency consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council and according to open meeting law, since the meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, our votes taken by the city council during this interview remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communication to be recognized to speak. I just want to take the attendance right now. We've got Tony Gross, Tracy O'Neil, Jeff Worthley, Sean Nolan is calling in, and Scott Memard. So we have a quorum of the full city council, which is great, and Joanne Sinos is our city clerk. Thank you, Joanne, for being here. So today we have one item, and so I'll ask you, Joanne, for the first order of business. I will continue the meeting. The city council to weigh in on the Massachusetts Municipal Association's recommendations on proposed Senate bills for the fiscal '23 state budget. So let me just tee this up for a moment. What I'm asking here is... So would everyone mind muting themselves if we're not? Thank you. So what I'm asking the city council to consider tonight in this special meeting is for us to be able to weigh in on the MMA recommendations and the proposed Senate bill amendments for the fiscal '23 state budget, as well as key appropriations. And I did want you to know that Senator Tar reached out to me late morning, and he let me know that their votes would most likely occur before the end of the day today. However, then these go to the House and Senate to conference committee to be reconciled and irreconciled. So we felt that it was still helpful for us to go through this. And what I can do at the end of this meeting is I can actually just be in touch with him and just say, "Our city council supported these amendments as follows." So that's what the process is right now. We did have a couple of late submittals to things like the Division of Local Services, some proposed bills, and an independent bill submitted to us this morning by Val Nelson. And this was on coastal resilience. It's a bill that Senator Tar is supporting in Greg Berger. And I would suggest, because this wasn't on the agenda, what we can do is if, as individual councilors, if that's something that you would like to support, you're free to send in an email of support referencing that bill, but just make sure you state that you are an individual member of the city council. So what I'd like to do right now is just screenshot, ask Joanne to screenshot for us, and so I can just kind of highlight what this is. There's one attendee right now, and that is Val Nelson. Okay, so this is a letter that we got late last week, and actually, I didn't get it until late Monday afternoon. So, Joanne, if you could just scroll up. I wanted to just show you, councilors, I think you've... Has anyone here on the call not read these bills? Okay, so it sounds like we have. So, Joanne, would you just scroll up so we can kind of follow this along? All right, there were some key bills on this, key municipal operational amendments to the fiscal budget that really captured me, and I think have also captured other councilors. And if you would just look down, this is from MMA. MMA represents all 379, I think it is, towns and cities in Massachusetts. And they've gone through all these with a fine-tooth comb, and they are making these recommendations. And so I was hoping that we could just review these, and if we like them, we can vote to support them. Some of them are very... Don't really affect us that much, but the first one is Amendment 647, which is a regional school transportation, 100% reimbursement, and that's being supported. It doesn't really affect us.
Well, it does because of our membership of the regional school.
Okay. So why don't we go through each of them, and then we can discuss them? So can you scroll up, Joanne, so we can see that? Great. So, Tony, would you mind, would you read that one for us? Amendment 647.
All right. Amendment 647, regional school transportation, 100% reimbursement. Please support an increase in the regional school transportation account, which is critical to rural and smaller communities. Amendment 647 filed by Senator Gobi would fund 100% of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's fiscal 2023 projected claims of $97 million. So that would affect us in our overall assessment from the regional school, because it would pay, you know, they'd be reimbursed on transportation, so that would lower operating.
And that sounds like a good bill. The next one is, thank you, Tony, and the next one is remote meeting extensions, if you could just scroll up. So this, I think, is extraordinarily important to all of us and timely. So they're asking us to support Amendment 1114 filed by Senator Brownsberger to extend provisions allowing for remote participation to open public meetings, as well as remote notarization, Joanne, and remote town meetings, among others, from July 15, 2022 to December 15, 2023. Massachusetts is in the middle of another rise in COVID transmissions, and extending the option for remote meetings will provide resiliency for government operations during a time of ongoing uncertainty and public health concern. This is a highly time-sensitive measure, and it makes perfect sense to include it in legislation that will get to the governor's desk before the current extension expires on July 15. And, Joanne, your hands raised? Go ahead.
Yeah, you said about notaries. That would not apply to us.
Okay. And why is that?
I believe in the bill, it only applies to attorneys in law offices.
Got it.
Remote notarization.
Okay.
Didn't apply to us, we couldn't do it.
Okay.
You are muted, Val.
Okay, sorry about that. So based on our first live meeting last week, we were wondering what the process was to this, and this is our opportunity to say that we support this. Would you scroll up, Joanne? And we have a second attendee right now. We have Bob Myers, who's a Woodford constituent.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Tracy, please do. Thank you.
When I first read this, I thought it meant this December. So this is like a year and a half of remote participation.
Exactly. They're just putting that out there because I think they want to make it as easy as possible for municipalities to do what they each feel they're comfortable with, based on COVID and technology, et cetera, and also on the will of the committee. You know, and I think that that's a positive one. Does anybody have any comments on that one?
The longer timeframe is certainly very helpful in terms of planning and anticipating costs related, as we have been, to hybrid or other alternatives.
Okay.
Absolutely. And then the next one is... Go ahead, anyone else raising their hand? I can't see you, so just speak out. This is an informal meeting. Go ahead.
We just want to make sure we understand that if this does get extended, if the council decides, and we have the ability to go in person or hybrid, we can still do that. This doesn't prohibit that. It just gives us additional time to figure it out if we want to need that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah. Good clarification. Anyone else have anything to say about Amendment 1114? Okay, the next one. Tony, do you want to read that one? Because I know you've been looking over these closely.
All right, so this was Amendment 743, Rural School Aid, and Amendment 704, Regionalization Grant Program. Amendment 743 was filed by Senator Hines to fund the Royal Rural School Aid account at $20 million and providing rural school assistant grants with priority given to proposals that support schools and districts that have experienced significant enrollment losses. An amendment 704 filed by Senator Gobi, which provides $500,000 for school district regionalization grants to regional school districts or school districts considering forming a regional school district or regionalization services. Now, this could be important to us. $500,000 goes, is very thin for the entire state, but it could be important to us because a while ago, I think I was still on the school committee when we approached Rockport to discuss about, you know, shared programs and things. So I think it sort of has stalled on the Rockport side, is what I heard last, but I haven't followed up on it recently. But this is some grant money that we may be able to actually tap into also if we have a need for it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Councilor O'Neil.
I'm not understanding quite what regionalization is. Who would... Are we regionalized currently? And if not, who would we regionalize with? I mean, would Gloucester and Rockport comprise a region? Or would we have to be like a region of Boston or...
No, 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 no. Hamilton-Whiteman is a regional school. Manchester-Essigs is a regional school.
Okay.
So there was funding that was made available to the tune of, I think, $50,000 for a study to be done about shared services with, shared programs, not services, shared programs with Rockport. But I think it has stalled, and I think it was the Rockport side that really, you know, because they had to kind of, you know, it takes two sides to talk.
Right.
And so, but, you know, with their really dramatic falling enrollment, they may be asked at some point by the state to regionalize, and I don't think Manchester-Essigs could accommodate them, so.
All right.
This may, I'm just saying, there's a possibility this may come in handy.
Right. And if we don't regionalize with Rockport, we probably won't get anything.
Right. And it's only $500,000, so it's not like it's a lot of money.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. These are good questions. The next one really resonated with me. That's Amendment 127, and I'm going to ask Joanne to reflect a little bit on this. This is early voting reimbursement. And the request is, "Please support an appropriation to reimburse municipalities for the cost of implementing early voting for state elections." Amendment 127 filed by Senator Feingold includes a $6 million appropriation to fund this state mandate. And just looking at the amount of work that early voting takes out of the clerk's office, Joanne, do you want to just elaborate on this one? Because I know you and I have been waiting for this to come forward, and it's wonderful to see. But could you, in a minute, just kind of describe why this is important to the clerk's office? Could you unmute yourself, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, because when this was first implemented, we didn't have any reimbursement. So the city had to front every, the cost of it, the cost of overtime for staff, the cost of mailing the ballots, and any other costs associated with the early voting. So the state did come back and reimbursed, not 100%, but a percentage of the mailing cost for early voting in person. Then after we did, I think there was a special bill for the first time early voting, we did get reimbursed for just overtime for staff, but not any other time. Like, city clerk staff, city clerk and assistant city clerk do not get reimbursed for their time in working for early voting. It's just the unions on that. And anything else that we had to provide, like drop boxes? Getting the poll workers, okay? They would only reimburse for a percentage of the hours for early voting. So this is another one of those unfunded mandates that is probably going to come up. So I would ask that you fully, you know, endorse this, so that... I don't know if they're going to reimburse 100%, but even if they do 80%, and the municipalities have to pick up the rest of the costs, it would, you know, help the city on that. Because right now, for poll workers, even though it's a 13-hour day, we only get reimbursed for a regular election, not even early voting, regular election, like, two hours for, like, from seven to nine, and then after from seven, six to eight. And we get reimbursed for those poll worker hours, but during the day, the rest of the hours, the city picks up the tab.
Great. That's really helpful. Thank you. Any other comments on that one before we move on? Okay. Could you scroll this one up? Tony, would you mind going through this one? This is a school committee one.
All right. Amendment 630 and 631, Chapter 70, Minimum Aid. So the Senate, House Ways and Means is proposing to double the per pupil minimum aid of $60 per student to recognize that 135 districts that are at minimal aid, which I don't know if we are. It's, we've always, MMA has consistently advocated for $100 per student minimum aid, but to go from 60 to... Senator Tar filed Amendment 631 and 630, which would increase Chapter 70, Minimum Aid, to $75 per pupil and $100 per pupil, respectively. So between those two amendments, he's gone from 75 to $100 per pupil, and that's in the Chapter 70 money, where we saw a, I think, a 48% increase in Chapter 70? Something like that? So that, we've already, we've seen quite a bit of this already.
That's what we reviewed last night in the budget.
Yeah. Yeah, which made up a big portion of...
On the charity sheet.
Yes, on the charity sheet. So this is definitely a good thing that will help out. But where it's only 135 districts, I think that we may be already at, you know, there's a minimum spending level, and Gloucester spends a little bit over that minimum amount that the state requires for us to spend as a unit. So I don't know if this, how much of effect this has on us, but I know the Chapter 70 has done us well this time around.
Okay. Sounds good.
This won't, this definitely won't, you know... Our senator put it in, so he's looking out for our good. I, this Chapter 70 on the minimum aid has been somewhat of a bugaboo for me over the course of the years, so I should have done more research on it if I had known, I'd give a report about it, but, sorry.
No, and I did have school committee chair Clancy review these with me this morning, and she felt comfortable with all the ones that were regarding the schools on this as a total amendment. So, okay. So the next one is Amendment 663. This is an MSBA commission. They're, "Please support Amendment 663 filed by Senator Feingold, which would create a special commission to study the Mass School Building Authority. The commission would review and make recommendations concerning reimbursement rates for construction, as well as other areas of concern, in order to maximize the important resources for cities and towns." And MMA is recommending that, and it seems to me to be good fiduciary evaluation to go through this. Does anyone here not agree with that, or does anyone want to comment on that? Okay. Joanne? Can you unmute yourself? Joanne? I can't, you're muted. Can you unmute yourself? Joanne, you're muted. Madam Clerk, you are muted. Joanne, can you hear us?
Sorry, I just want to inform you that Councilor O'Hara has joined the meeting.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Welcome, Jamie.
And just to let you know that Councilor Nolan is not on the screen, but he's following along closely, and he's got all the documents in front of him. So thank you. All right, so the next one here is Amendment 332, Local Opt-In for Permanent Outdoor Dining. "Please support this amendment to give municipalities the option to permanently extend outdoor dining options." It's filed by Senator Tar. Amendment 332 would allow restaurants to apply for local approval to expand outdoor table service. Just to let you know, I did speak to Greg Catamatory about this earlier this week, and he said that this really doesn't affect what our current order is on the table, but this is just giving more flexibility for municipalities who might want to continue to advocate for outdoor dining, particularly now that the COVID rates are, seem to be going up again. So it's not a bad thing to have. And then next is the cybersecurity. Does anyone have any questions on that one? I know we're kind of going fast, but we have an important budget meeting tonight. And any comments on the local opt-in for permanent dining? Seeing none. Joanne, if we could just scroll down, that would be great. All right, this is the Cybersecurity Commission. It's Amendment 803. "Please support Amendment 803 filed by Senator Moore, establishing a cybersecurity review commission. Municipalities remain vulnerable to cyber attacks and are seeking the guidance and best practices advice that would result from this commission, including a municipal representative would add a local perspective to this state's agency deliberation." If someone is, needs to be muted, that would be great, because I'm getting some interference. Any questions on that? This next one, I think we will end up hearing from Scott Memard, I bet. But Amendment 834, Community Preservation Act Surplus Funding. "Please support Amendment 834 filed by Senator Comerford, which directs a comptroller to transfer $20 million to the Mass Community Preservation Trust Fund prior to sending the net surplus for fiscal 2022 to the Commonwealth Stabilization Fund. The number of CPA communities has reached 187, of which we are one. And this amendment would increase the state's match from approximately 35% to 43%, about the same state match percentage as last year." Any comments about that, or any questions about that?
It's just become more important as more communities, especially bigger communities, have jumped on board to take advantage of the Community Preservation Act locally. We're currently at a 1% assessment. Rockport's at a 3% assessment, so they get much more funding. But this year was a good example of an increase in the funding that was made available to us. It's just that formula has gotten tighter and tighter from when they launched the program due to the number of municipalities are now divvying up the pie and participating. So this would be a very helpful step.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that?
Right here, Tracy.
Go ahead, Tracy.
I have to apologize. I have trouble with the verbiage on this. I, it's just me. It says it would increase the state's match from 35 to 43%, and then it says about the same state match as last year. So how can it be the same as last year if it increased from...
Last year was a dramatic increase, but on a one-time basis.
It fluctuates every year.
17 to 20%.
I'm sorry, what?
Typically, our share, our contribution from the state has been limited, it's gone down, and it's been around 17 to 20%. This past year was a wonderful exception to that, and we were much higher. And this would be an effort to make more funds available so that we would continue to get the higher rate, but it varies every year.
Okay, so it went up about 8%? Is that, is that... So is this, I just want to understand the writing.
Well, we're hoping to keep it at 43%, and that's what it was for last year.
And this is just the state's contribution towards matching our own local...
Okay.
This is not our local vote. It's the state's match to what we assess our citizens.
So we still take 1%? That's it? But then the state gives us back this extra money to surplus that when...
No, I understand, I understand the philosophy or whatever. But it just says it went up from 35 to 43%, so it went up 8%, right?
I think possibly the governor's budget had 35% in it, and this amendment raises that initial percentage from the governor to 43%.
Right. And then it says it's about the same as last year, so that's what's confusing.
Right. So I would agree with what Tony is saying. So most likely, the initial budget was 35%. In the Senate, they're recommending that we bring it up to 43%, which is consistent with what it was last year.
Okay.
Rather than decreasing it from last year to 35%.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. That's a great question. So Amendment 856, Flexibility in Municipal Broadband Spending. "Please support Amendment 856 filed by Senator Hins, which would allow funds appropriated for closing the digital divide to be granted to municipalities seeking relief from debt incurred for the construction of broadband networks. These communities were forced to step in when private carriers ignored their regions and left their households and businesses behind in the broadband build-out, adding costly burdens on local taxpayers."
I don't think that is. I think we're pretty much covered 100%, aren't we?
Um...
Comcast?
I believe we are.
But...
Does anyone else know? I mean, I don't know how that, how it would hurt.
Be a good thing.
Right. So Amendments 942 and 951, Shannon Grants. "Please support Amendment 942 and Amendment 951 filed by Senator D. Domenico and Senator Edwards respectfully to increase funding for Shannon Grant Program. The Anti-Gang Grant Program helps cities and towns respond to and suppress gang-related activities." And then the final one is probably one that would have the greatest impact. And then the final one is um probably one that um would have the greatest impact on municipalities. And that is um that MMA has strong concerns regarding amendment eight, ten, relative to retiree cost of living adjustments or COLAs. The amendment the amendment would authorize local and regional pension boards to award a COLA adjustment of up to five point nine percent to retirees in fiscal two thousand twenty-three above the current three percent cap. This would very likely increase a local unfunded pension liability and drive up the cost for taxpayers. Most communities in the state participate in regional pension systems and do not have direct decision-making authority regarding adoption of a higher COLA. And we are aware of no system that has incorporated higher COLAs into their unfunded pension liability calculations. Adoption of a higher COLA, even if limited to one year, would permanently increase the pension obligations for all participating communities, requiring required increased annual appropriations to fund the cost. We recommend that you reach out to your chief municipal officials to determine what the financial impact would be in the cities and towns in your district. It is likely to be significant. Um, so those are those are the amendments. And um, does anyone have any questions on any of these before we get rid of the screenshot? Um, Counsel O'Neill.
Yeah, sorry, um. So this is increasing a fight, um increasing the COLA for retired city workers or state workers?
Anyone that is under our pension.
Okay, so that would increase huh?
City, not teachers, not the teachers. They're under their own plan, retirement plan, but all the other city employees.
All right, right, so and they've retired and there there's a three percent cap and this would raise it to almost double it, right?
Correct.
To give them, so that's like, that's that's a lot, right?
Yeah.
It's it's and it's a lot all of a sudden that's being proposed. So MMA is saying that they don't think that that's a good idea. They think that that be a concern because all of a sudden um we would not be, we'd have to go through a whole budget again and um take a look at how that would affect us if, in fact, um our pension board decided to bring that up to the maximum. Is that, Tony, that's correct, right, what I just said?
That's yeah, I think that that's exactly correct. Um, and I think Kenny weighed in on this too. This is probably not a good idea for us at this time.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, okay, good.
Or at any time.
So 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 like I said, exactly. So about five of these really just caught my eye when I was going through it. And I'm like, not knowing how far along the Senate would be in deliberating this week on these bills, I thought it would be beneficial for us to to weigh in on it. And um and I I know that Senator Tar said they're probably going to have this done by tonight. And if we decide as a council that we want to um support these recommendations as summarized in this um bill, in this recommendation from MMA, then I will just pick up the phone and call him and tell him that our council has um reviewed this and we support MMA's recommendations. So um, does someone want to make a motion on this and we can and we can discuss it? Or um. Um, Joanne, you're muted.
Do you are you going to have public input? Because Robert Myers is has his hand up.
I I was not going to, just because it's not a public hearing and it wasn't advertised as a public hearing.
Okay, I just want you feel you be aware of it so that he knows.
Yeah, Bob, I'll call you after the meeting so we can talk about it, but we have to be consistent, but thank you.
I'd like to talk on that last one, the COLA also.
Okay.
Um, it's interesting that it doesn't have um an a sponsor. Uh, somebody, you know, that wasn't filed by someone. And also, this is going to have, I'm sure there's a heavy lobbying push by the um the unions to to have this move forward. So there's probably some pressure for this, so if we can make sure that this one gets a little highlighted, um, that would be a good thing. So that's all, I just wanted to make people aware that 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 there is going to be that pressure from behind. And I find it interesting that it doesn't have a sponsor on there.
Hmm, okay, thank you. Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. First, thank you, Counsel Gross. I think you apologized for not doing a thorough presentation on one of the school ones. I thought it was fantastic, thank you. So when Tracy raises her point here, five percent is a lot. It's also the next year's COLA increase is compounded. So.
Right.
This year, we're spending eleven million dollars to help fund our pension program. That number is going to continue to go up in two thousand thirty-four, that's twenty-five million out of regular budget. You add five percent to that, it just becomes a a challenge that I don't think we want to um, we can't take on. I don't think we can afford to do that. So um, can we separate these out and do it sort of like a consent agenda on the first four or five and then separate the COLA one out? Because that's the sense I'm getting is support for majority of them and not support for one potentially.
Well, well, their recommendation, Counsel Worthley, is not to support that. That there so MMA is not supporting that. So if we if we just if if we just state this as we're supporting the recommendation of this May eighteenth document, then we will be doing just what you said.
Yeah, except theirs doesn't say we're against it.
Right.
Strong concerns.
Right.
Well, yeah.
So I'll take your recommendation. If you think that this is worded well enough to say, keep it all together, then great, but strong.
Oh, you're frozen.
Counsel Worthley, you're frozen. Um.
Yeah, it doesn't, you're right.
Yeah, I would like to agree. I would tend to agree with Counselor Worthley because, you know, you know, in in every single one of these, they say, please support, please support. And this one doesn't say, please do not support, you know? So if 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 there's a way to say, you know, we cull that one out.
We we agree with the MMA's recommendation to not 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 support this particular one.
Right.
Okay, so why don't we um add that?
The interesting thing is based on the uh the numbers here of all the proposed amendments, you know, the MMA has gone through this with a fair fairly fine-tooth comb because there are a whole lot of numbers that are missing in the sequence here. So there are a lot of proposed amendments that have been made by various members of the Senate, State Senate, that are not being recommended or endorsed for our behalf by the MMA.
Right, and um it was it was um nice for me to hear. I was talking to um Mayor Verga about some of the things that they discussed at the mayor's meeting last week. And um a lot of these bills were part of their conversation. So he was happy that we were going to be having this conversation. Um, because there's there's a lot of passion beside behind some of these bills and they're very important to us in Gloucester. Um, so um, Tony, do you want to do you want to take a stab, Counsel Gross, at making a a motion? And um of of what we want to support? And um and and then stating the last one as we've decided would be helpful. And that would be amendment eight, ten. Well, well, let's put it this way. Should we should we take any of these off of this? Um, does anyone want to to take one of these off and not consider? Does anyone have a problem with any of these? Okay, seeing none.
I think I can do it, um, including including the last one.
Okay.
Um. I move that we support the Mass Municipal Association's letter of um May eighteenth um regarding the amendments enclosed therein. And would and on the last amendment regarding um amendment eight, ten, we strongly oppose any increase in the COLA adjustments. Second it.
Perfect. Good job for not having a template, Counsel Gross.
Did we get that, Joanne? We'll have to take it off the Zoom.
And quick question.
All right, so um so we're in the discussion now and um Counsel Worthley has a question. Go ahead, let's discuss this. Motion by Counsel Gross and it was seconded by Counsel Memard, correct?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counsel Worthley.
So I support exactly what Tony articulated very well, thank you. I would like to, I know this is a public hearing, but could we ask a question of an attendee? Potentially just at least get the bill number and so that if we are going to send individual letters.
It's in our email. We have an email from from.
Valerie came here to support today.
It's in our, we have it in our email.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that in front of me. Thank you.
Yeah, and we and we discussed that at the beginning and and we are encouraging counselors um who might want to support what she sent to us to go ahead and um and and support. Yeah, and I I know personally I will be doing that as an individual counselor and I will get that done by the end of the day today, just support it. And we can do that as long as we say that we're individually doing that because this was not specifically on our agenda. We didn't get the material in advance. But I I think seeing that it's my personal opinion, well, I won't, I won't do that. That's not fair. So we can we can we can individually decide if we want to support um the document that um that Val Nelson sent to us.
So what I was asking for is just the bill number. I know it's in our email, I just saw it's bill number fifty-four.
Yep. Composedly, yeah, exactly. Um, do you want to read the paragraph, Counsel Worthley?
We have a motion on the table, I just want to make sure we make time for this. So can we do this? Can we discuss this afterwards? Just to get all the councils who may want to support it, give them the information that they need.
Okay, that's fair. So let's let's continue this discussion on the motion. Anyone else want to um to add to this discussion? Seeing none, um roll call, vote. Let's see, I think Mem- Counsel Memard first. So um.
Follow Tuesday, yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. The. Counsel Gross, Grow and Voto are not here, so the yeses have it, six in favor.
Gross is here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's only one absentee.
You made the motion, how shame on me.
I said yes when you when you blew past my name.
Thank you, I'm so sorry. I should be like bowing to you for making such a good motion.
I wouldn't go that far.
Seven in favor, um, two absent, uh Grow and Majota. So um, so the motion passes. And what I will do is um, I will get on the phone um with Counselor uh with um Senator Tar as soon as this meeting ends and I'll tell him, I'll verbally tell him um what we supported. So I think he'll appreciate that. And even if this has been resolved by the end of the day today, they're still doing the reconciliation between the Senate and the House budgets. And I think it's helpful for him to know that we're behind him on on this. So um, MMA, MMA.
Well done.
Um, so um, the the only other thing that um that Counsel Worthley asked to bring up is um the um ecological restoration, climate nature-based solutions and community benefits. Mass Senate Amendment Fifty-four, proposed by Senator Tar, Manchester by the Seas, Confronting the Challenges of Climate Change Project in the City of Gloucester and the Towns of Essex and Rockport, two hundred thousand dollars. Um. Do you want to do you want to speak to that for a second, um Counsel Worthley? Because you are our legislative liaison, go ahead.
So I know it's not on the agenda right at the moment and I'm very cognizant and respectful of open meeting laws. And so what I think we should be doing is we're all going to write, if we all want to write as individuals, we just should be clear of what we're what we have. It's bill number fifty-four. The title, the email as Tony mentioned, thank you. And it is um titled, confronting the challenges of climate change. And we'd like to, we're being asked to indicate our support for that amendment. So um, where Valerie can't speak at the moment, I'm going to do my best to speak on her behalf. But we have the email, we have heard dialogue on it. I think we can look, read it, work, pull a few points from there, create your own email if you'd like. Bill number fifty-four. I don't think it's appropriate, given the advertising, to go any further into discussing and debating it. But I think if everyone has what they need, if they want it, um bill number fifty-four.
And I think that's it's a good, it's a good exercise for us to go through because whenever we see any type of bills that come forward, we can always make a personal recommendation, but we just have to be clear that we're not speaking on behalf of the city council. And particularly for someone like me as being the president, I have to be even more clear with that because I am not speaking on regard to all of you because this was not on the agenda. But you can personally make a decision, just be clear on that when you do that. Does that make sense? Okay, um Counsel Gross.
And without objection, everyone's okay with everyone signing as a city councillor, correct? Right, without objection, um, I would think that that, so everybody's okay with that. And there's also included in that also um Val Nelson sent um Greg Verga's letter too. I'm surprised that we didn't that we didn't get. But um, anyway, so that's included too, to help help out anybody who needs to, you know, paraphrase or or.
Yeah. Actually, it was I it was on um what she sent to us all. There were two documents.
It was, I I was, I know, I was saying, I was surprised that Greg hadn't sent it to us, but.
Oh, I know, yeah. Well, you know what, I I think going forward, so so Counsel Worthley, I'm glad you brought this up. I think we're all clear on what we can do. And I think going forward, this has been a good um, a good way to understand how we as a council can influence decisions that are made outside of Gloucester. And we, in your job as legislative liaison, Counsel Worthley, um, the more we can proactively see what's up in front of us and what the Senate and the House are looking at, look at their bills, see what MMA has to say. Um, I have a lot of confidence in MMA just because they represent all of our cities and towns and they have a great base of people that are looking at all these. Um, so I think that we can always have an opportunity of getting together. We can put these matters on our agendas in normal city council meetings if we want to review one. And we can do resolutions, we can just do a statement of vote and we can let our state rep and our state senators know how we feel. And that will give them that they will feel more empowered to make decisions on our behalf if we're letting them know that we're watching what they're doing and we know that these are important bills. So I think this is really important. Um, you know, we know that we talk a lot about zoning, we talk a lot about ordinances and we have budget responsibilities. Well, this, what we did today has a huge budget impact. And I'm totally appreciative that that seven members of our council were willing to get together at the short notice, forty hours in advance. We did everything correctly, um, but um that that you took the time to be here today because this is important to our budget and to um the taxpayers in Gloucester. So thank you. Is there anything else?
Note note that Judith Hoglander is also joined as a as an attendee as well as the other two. So thank you, Judith.
That's great, appreciate it. Val Nelson, Judith Hoglander and Robert Myers, thank you. Um, anything else to add before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
School committee review at five o'clock.
Okay, we have to do a quick roll call. We're going to start with Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
We have a great night.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman. Yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, we'll see you shortly.